And we are live.
Thank you Claudia. Good evening and welcome to the virtual meeting of the City of Dublin Planning and Zoning Commission. The Ohio Legislature passed several emergency laws to address the pandemic, including the ability for public entities to conduct virtual meetings. We appreciate this ability to maintain our continuity of government and will be holding our meetings online and live streaming on YouTube until further notice. You can access the live stream on the city's website. In order to submit any questions or comments during the meeting, please use the form under the streaming video on the city's website. Those questions and comments will be relayed to the commission by the meeting moderator. We welcome your comments on cases. Please provide a valid name and address when submitting your comments and please refrain from making any inappropriate comments. We want to accommodate public participation and comments to the greatest extent possible and we certainly appreciate your patience. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting into order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Those in the meeting, please turn your video off and unmute yourself to join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The flag.
The United States of America. And to the republic which stands for which stands for nation.
Nation.
Under God. Indivisible. Justice strong. Thank you, everyone. At this time, Ms. Beal, will you please call roll?
Ms. Kennedy? Yes. Mr. Schneer?
Yes.
Mr. Suplack?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes, here.
Ms. Call?
Here.
Mr. Grimes?
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. I will entertain a motion for acceptance of tonight's documents and approval of minutes. Is there a motion?
They're moved.
Second.
Mr. Fishman for first, Mr. Grimes for a second, Ms. Beal?
Ms. Call?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Mr. Suplack?
Yes.
Mr. Schneer?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. The Planning and Zoning Commission is an advisory board to city council when rezoning and plotting of property are under consideration. In such cases, city council will receive recommendations from the commission. In other cases, the commission has the final decision-making responsibility. Anyone who intends to address the commission on any of these administrative cases must be sworn in. The agenda order is typically determined at the beginning of the meeting by the chair. The rules and regulations of the Planning and Zoning Commission state that no new agenda items are to be introduced after 10:30 PM. At this point, anyone intending to address the commission on these two cases that we are seeing tonight, will you please raise your right hand? And answer in the affirmative. For those of you with video off, if you could turn your video on. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony to this commission?
Yes.
Yes, I do.
Thank you, everyone. Tonight, we will be hearing two new cases. These are related to one another, so we will be hearing them at the same time. Case number one is Dublin Community North Pool North Site 19-133 AFDP, located at 5660 Dublinshire Drive, for an amended final development plan. And case number two is Dublin Community Pool North Building 20-082A FDP, also at 5660 Dublinshire Drive. And these cases were originally filed separately, but timing is aligned so that they could be heard together. This application is a request for the review and approval of site improvements for the Dublin Community Pool North to accommodate new pool space and a new pool building, as well as renovations and associated building improvements to three existing mechanical buildings and an additional and an addition to the existing parking lot, which requires text modification. The 28.55 acre site is north of Dublinshire Drive, about 1,500 feet west of the intersection of Arlington Parkway and its zone-planned unit development district. Nikki, do you have our case presentation tonight?
I do. You give me just a minute.
Thank you. It looks like we're also joined by Matt Ehrman, Director of Parks and Recreation for the City of Dublin. Welcome, Matt.
Sorry, I'm having a little trouble with PowerPoint this evening for some reason. There we go. Okay. Good evening. As mentioned, this is a request for review and approval of two amended final development plans for the Dublin Community Pool North. The amended final development plan is the fourth and optional step in the planned unit development process and allows for modifications to take place over time. As mentioned, the site is located north of Dublinshire and south of Brand Road. The site is located within an established neighborhood and shares the site with the Wyandot Elementary as well as the Arlington Park. The site is accessed via Dublinshire Drive and there's a shared parking lot located between Wyandot Elementary and the Dublin Community Pool North. The proposal before the commission this evening is the result of many months of public engagement and iterative design. Matt Ehrman, the Director of Parks and Recreation, is here with us this evening and is prepared to address the community engagement in more detail. These are the existing site conditions that follow. You'll notice on the left-hand side of your screen is the existing pool. The existing pool is a combined facility combining the lap pool and leisure pool. You'll also see the existing slide as well as the west facade of the pool building. On the right-hand side of your screen is the existing parking lot. As mentioned, this is a shared parking lot and a parking lot addition is proposed with this application. These are the existing conditions of the pool base. You can see here the degradation of the concrete over time. This is the main pool building as well as the concession building as viewed from the east side or the parking lot side. These buildings are proposed to be demolished along with the pool as part of this application to make way for a completely renovated pool facility. These are the three existing mechanical and storage buildings that are proposed to remain on the site. There are exterior modifications proposed as part of this application and these buildings will be integrated into the overall aesthetic of the North Pool campus. A quick overview of the project, as mentioned in the introduction, there are both site and building components under review by the commission this evening. The site components include three new pools, the parking lot expansion, as well as stormwater management and landscape modifications. In regards to the buildings, a new pool building is proposed. This pool building has both a north and south portion. There are those modifications to the mechanical buildings and approval of one sign is requested with this application. In detail, three new pools are proposed. The southernmost pool is a lap pool. This is a dedicated facility. There are up to eight lap lanes that are proposed, as well as diving platforms and a recreational rock wall. Just to the north of the lap pool is the leisure pool, specifically the two water slides as well as the designated landing area. The leisure pool incorporates outcomes of the community impact survey. As part of that, zero depth entry was identified as one of the primary desires for this facility. To the north of the leisure pool is the waiting top pool. This pool is the smallest in size and circular in shape. This is also a zero-depth entry facility and has sun sails that provide shade as well as a variety of seating around all three pools. The splash pad is proposed to remain, although there will be minor modifications to upgrade it. This is the proposed pool character. You'll notice in the foreground, the lap lane pool and in the background, the water slides and leisure pool. You'll also get a sense of the proposed architectural character of the main pool buildings. A parking lot expansion is required with the expansion of the pool facility. Existing today, there are 155 parking spaces. These parking spaces are shared between Wyandot Elementary as well as the Dublin Community Pool North as they have different times of operation. The total required number of parking spaces with the expansion of this facility is 200 spaces. A total of 176 vehicular spaces are being proposed. The Division of Parks and Recreation has provided an assessment identifying that based on staffing levels as well as the anticipated maximum occupancy of the pool and its location within a neighborhood where a fair number of people walk and bike to the facility, a decreased parking amount is required. Additionally, this application includes landscape modifications as well as tree preservation. A significant amount of tree preservation is proposed as well as the open space preservation of the large grassy areas to the west of the pool facility. Additionally, with the parking lot expansion, there is new vehicular use area landscaping. And finally, there is landscaping proposed adjacent to the building, particularly on the east side, to soften the appearance of the building from the parking lot. Two stormwater management basins are proposed. These are proposed to be dry basins and will be planted with hardy, water-loving plants and will be maintained by the city. These basins are dry primarily for safety, given the site location adjacent to a public park, a public school, as well as this pool facility. Staff is conditioning that these dry basins be planted with additional pollinators, both spring and fall, to enhance the color as well as the character. The, as mentioned, the pool building is comprised of two buildings. The south and north buildings are distinct buildings as well as the central entry canopy. These are the building elevations facing the parking lot as well as the pool. You'll notice here, this building is typified by its sloped roof, sloping from east to west. The building varies in height from 12 feet to 15 feet in height and the central entry canopy is 17 feet to 22 feet in height. This height is well beneath the maximum permitted height within residential districts, which is 35 feet. The character of these buildings incorporates natural materials but in a current aesthetic typical to projects that have been previously approved for other parks and recreational facilities throughout Dublin. You'll notice here, the primary building material is a horizontal cedar siding in a dark gray, which is accented by stone veneer in a medium gray at key locations where pedestrians and users interface with the building. These are the north and south elevations. The north elevation is the area of the site where concessions are located. A number of trellises and canopies are proposed along the elevations of these buildings with the predominant canopy being along the north side. This canopy is constructed of Corten architectural steel and supported by masonry piers. This is the proposed building character. You'll notice here, the elevations are softened and warmth is added to the material color palette by the use of glue laminate beams in a natural finish. The proposed roof is a charcoal metal standing seam and the remainder of the materials are identified here on the screen. The final item this evening for review and approval is a building-mounted sign. The majority of parks and recreation facilities throughout Dublin have ground signs as this is within a larger site. It seems important that this building be identified with a building-mounted sign once you arrive on it. The proposed sign is individually mounted letters in a metallic finish. Final sign design details have not been provided. Staff is conditioning that these design details be provided, subject to staff approval. Some additional character images, you'll see here the underside of that central entry canopy that's freestanding and that warm, natural finish wood as well as the Corten steel supports. And this is the leisure pool. Here you can see the zero-entry feature as well as the substantial amount of seating around the deck and the concession canopy on the left-hand side of the screen. With that, staff is recommending approval of a minor text modification to permit 176 parking spaces where 200 would normally be required and is recommending approval of an amended final development plan for the site. That is with two conditions. And finally, staff is recommending approval of an amended final development plan for the building and that is with one condition. Be happy to answer any questions this evening. Otherwise, as mentioned, Matt Ehrman, the Director of Parks and Recreation, is also prepared to address the commission tonight.
Matt, did you have a presentation?
I do. Good evening, commission members and member Fox. Madam Chair, if you don't mind, give me a second here to load up my screen here and I'll hopefully provide a little bit more of a proactive approach to answering some questions and address some of the concerns that were perhaps brought up during the process of of design and the time it's taken thus far to get us to this point. Can you all see my screen okay?
Yes, sir.
Great. I want to talk a little bit about some of the original concepts that influenced the project and certainly the cost estimates that we presumed at the very forefront of the project. We originated the design idea and the replacement of the pool in 2017. We estimated the project at approximately $6 million. A lot of that was based on the history of the pool usage. The concept itself, as we all know, this is a kind of a bittersweet situation for us and taking down an iconic piece of recreational opportunities that have served so many thousands of people over the years to bring forward a whole new generation of opportunities. So the concept was a little bit more along the lines of a community-based pool with a similar bather load and volume of water. We looked at the idea of salvaging some of the features or some of the facilities as Nikki mentioned. If you can see my cursor here, this building here, which is currently the mechanical building, will be salvaged and repurposed. This is a storage facility here that will be salvaged and repurposed as well as the spray park area and mechanical room in that area will be salvaged, repurposed and re-faced to fit in with the existing campus. So we took a lot of these components and put together an idea of how we might go about designing the next phase of this pool. So we took a little bit of time to look at some of the comparable projects in and around the area. The City of Grandview Heights was one example. You can see the price tag there, the total cost. Some of the items that were taken into consideration was the salvageability of some of the existing features and so forth, which kept us in line with about the $6 million mark. And similarly with the City of Athens was another facility we took into consideration with similar types of water volume, surface area, bather loads, activities and so forth. As Nikki mentioned, we have spent a significant amount of time with the community and received a generous amount of input throughout this process. And I want to commend our city council members who have attended these meetings. They were, I believe they attended, at least some of them attended every single one of them. And there was quite the engagement around the community. We went through a series of six community workshops plus an original survey that led us to where we are today. And we started off with just an introduction of what we were looking at in the way of those influences. And in the very beginning, there was a strong swim team presence at these meetings, which took the project a little bit more in the direction of a competition pool of a 50-meter indoor-outdoor facility with retractable roof, which was completely off of the existing budget and estimations and so forth. And once we originally or eventually provided some of the design concepts for that, then it reverted back to a very strong neighborhood presence that shifted the design back to more of a community accommodation rather than a competitive pool. So as the concept design progressed, I think we went through a possibility of maybe 11 iterations that we either shared with the public or went through significant amount of review and analysis and changes over the course of the next several months. And at each of these meetings, we had a very strong turnout from many members of the community with a variety of different influences. And I would like to say on the very last, the final concept, as it was presented as what you're seeing today, there was noteworthy acceptance among, I would say, everybody that was in attendance that evening. And we felt very comfortable and good that we were able to deliver a product that represented the community because that's really what this facility is all about. I am lost, lost my presentation here. Bear with me. Well, my presentation doesn't want to play, so let me try something else here real quickly. Okay, can you see the screen okay now?
I just see white right now. While Matt is fighting with technology, do we have, commission members, do you have questions for Nikki and her presentation?
Do. Ms. Call?
Yes, Ms. Kennedy.
Ms. Martin, can you speak to specifically about the sign, the building-mounted sign? As a reference, can you remind the council what the sign at the south pool looks like? If it's similar or not similar to this proposal?
So almost every community facility in Dublin has a Dublin Parks and Recreation style sign. That is a wood sign routed with a green background and white letters. To my knowledge, that is the sign that is at the Dublin Community Pool South. The Dublin Community Pool South site is slightly dissimilar as it is dedicated to the pool facility, whereas this site is dedicated to multiple users and not only during the day but throughout the year.
Thank you.
All right, Matt, looks like you're back up and running.
Okay, what I am attempting to show is the same slide that I left off on, which is the significant community engagement. Is that what you're seeing?
Right now, we're seeing project update.
You're not in presentation mode right now.
Correct.
Well, one screen is and one screen is not. Therein lies the problem.
All right, so we're on the significant community engagement slide now.
Okay, thank you, and I apologize for that that moment of pause. I'm going to leave it in this mode just for safety sake.
Understood.
But Nikki went over the the site plan and the layout of these pools, which was significantly designed by those and the members of the community from the recreation swim team to lap swimmers to kids that want activity areas that don't currently exist in the existing leisure pool. Separating these pools gives a whole lot more options of those types of activities and flexibility in the programming, et cetera. So that was, there was a significant change in scope if I, for lack of a better term, in the original concept in that the original estimate cost was $6 million. There was an increase in the project scope itself or several increases, which had to do with the pool surface area increases. There was the separation of pools that was requested. We had an increased requirement for stormwater facilities for the site and certainly for the additional parking area, which amounted to approximately $1.4 million additional cost to the project. And then certainly, we have some of the miscellaneous costs associated with the project itself, which was the increased building size to meet a certain amount of deck space. Certainly inflation over the last three years, the increased deck space, enhanced pool access point in the lap pool area and certainly all of the soft costs with contingencies in design and so forth. And I must say that, you know, as we work through a lot of these increases and new ideas, it took a series of time for us to redesign, cut things out, find ways to save money, come back to the table and get new estimates. And, you know, that that put the project back a few months, which is why we are where we are today. Certainly, the estimated cost has increased by $2.5 million associated with these increases. We did take this to city council last month and had them review exactly all of these elements that were being proposed and they were in favor unanimously to move forward with the project as designed. So the milestones we're up against now with the schedule is certainly the approval from this commission this evening. And once it's approved, we will take the construction contract to city council on Monday, June 22 for their review. And upon their approval, we will anticipate construction being or commencing early July, which still allows time for us to complete this project prior to the May 2021 opening date of Memorial Day weekend. So obviously, those are all So obviously, those are all subject to the weather conditions and construction, any any construction challenges along the way. So we are still well on on track for this project. We would certainly like to get started as soon as possible. And with that, if there are any questions, we have the design team from MSA. We have Katie Freeland and Keith Hall. And we have Tim Schmollenberger from MKSK and our landscape architect manager Sean Kowetski here with us this evening. If you have any detailed questions, I'm sure they'd be happy to chime in and support. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. If I can have you cease the presentation, just that way I can see the entire commission on one screen. All right, questions and comments for staff at this point in time? Ms. Kennedy, thank you for kicking us off. Can you continue?
Thank you, Ms. Call. Ms. Martin, can you speak a little bit more about the parking situation? So from your presentation, the current parking allows for 155 vehicles. Is that an overparked or an underparked situation? And the reason I'm asking this question is I'm curious, obviously, because the new proposal states that it'll it'll have 176 parking spots compared to the required 200. So I'm curious what the current situation is.
Yeah, and that's a great question, and I honestly don't have an answer for you. I did not crunch the numbers on the surface area of the existing pool and what would be required for that. The site is very old, as you know, developed in 1987. And from a from a staff perspective, really what is out there is what we used as our our base. So we said, this is what's allowed, this is how it's been operating. And moving forward, we would expect it to be in compliance. But we unfortunately don't have records from how a determination was made in 1987 on 155 parking spaces.
Okay, follow up question, Ms. Martin. Do you have any documentation as to how utilized the the parking lot was, the existing parking lot when the pool was in operation last year?
Perhaps Matt Erman or Sean Kowetski could speak to their operations. But from my understanding, as it's a shared facility and the peak school times and peak pool times are opposite times of year, it it has functioned quite well. I think there are some instances where there is overflow parking. But I think Parks and Recreation is hoping with the expansion of this lot, that issue will be mitigated both for pool pool users as well as those school events during special times of year that, you know, draw more parents.
Thank you, Nikki. Matt, did you have any insight into how, what the utilized capacity was when the pool was in operation?
Yeah, when the pool was in normal operation, there was typically not much of an issue with parking. I think the over or the the additional parking spaces would accommodate any of the overflow issues we were dealing with with any of the normal operation. One of the things that Nikki brought up earlier was that at any given time, you can usually find 50 to 75 bikes out in front of this facility. It is right in the heart of the community and kids are notoriously riding their bikes to this facility. So by and large, you know, the operation relies on that very heavily. The only times we might be in a parking situation where we might have to find alternatives is during swim meet season. We have a variety of swim meets that are held out at this site. So when we offer the opportunity for others to come to the facility, those swim meets can can generate a little bit more parking than a normal operation. And we have worked with the church across the street on Dublinshire to help us with that on on occasion. But there's really only one major meet that we hold out there any one summer. And, you know, we've been able to make it work with with the existing parking that we have with a little bit of overflow.
Thank you, Mr. Erman. Commission, looking to you, anyone, Jane?
A couple of questions about connectivity, which we didn't really talk about at council, so I'm just kind of curious. You mentioned about the bikes. I noticed that there's spaces for like 50 bikes. Is that right, Matt? Is there a a place that bike storage can be off to the side? Is is that?
Yeah, so the proposal is actually for 100 bicycle parking spaces. Some of that bicycle parking, like the community favorite Dolphin Bicycle Rack, that'll be repurposed and remain on site, but there will be additional bicycle parking with this application.
Okay, and then looking at the drawings, it was just kind of hard to see because it doesn't show, you know, the neighboring streets. But if we're just overall looking at pedestrian, biking and micro transit connectivity, and hopefully in the future, we have a lot more of that, would you say that the site really addresses the ability for micro transit drop off, easy connectivity by bike pass or or sidewalks that can be used as bike pass? In other words, are the kids going to have to ride through a auto parking lot to get where they need to go?
I would say not, not at all. And Mr. Erman or Mr. Kowetski, feel free to chime in. But as this facility is within the Arlington Park, that park has an existing and fairly robust shared use path system that traverses it. So both neighboring kids and adults that live immediately adjacent to can use that path network as well as neighborhoods in the community that may be a little bit further away, but still bikeable. It's it's really integrated with the network.
Jane, so I I live just across Muirfield from this park, just off of Dublinshire. So you have a tunnel that goes under brand that connects to the pathway system and has two different paths to the pool from the north. You have the path that comes up all the way from Indian Run. You can you can bike or walk on the wider path. The wider path is on the north side, so closer to the pool along Dublinshire. There is a narrower path on the south side of the street, so you have dual paths along Dublinshire. And you have a tunnel going under Muirfield onto Dublinshire. So of all of the different areas with connectivity, this is one of the best.
That's great. And and with the new with the new development plan, so all the places, all of the biking and sidewalks connect to that within the new development plan just nicely. Okay. One other comment, and I wanted to ask you, it doesn't appear as if there's very many shade trees. And like I said, I'm not oriented really as to what's adjacent to this on the east. Doesn't seem like there's very many shade trees in a parking in the parking lot. And I know from my own experience, when you're coming out of a swimming pool and that asphalt is hot, that shade tree is something to shade the parking lot. It seems very minimal. Is there a reason for that in the way of shade trees in the parking lot?
So the landscape code, specifically the vehicular use area regulations, do require a shade tree in the parking lot based on the number of square feet of parking lot. So in those large islands, the the those are where the shade trees are proposed. The, all of the existing islands, those shade trees will remain. And then as the trees in the new parking lot addition begin to grow, they will eventually provide shade, but.
Okay, so you're going to get more shade than you already have, is that what you're saying? You think it's adequate? You know what I'm saying? That that's a hot, hot asphalt when kids are in their bare feet running to the car.
Yeah, hey, Jane, there's a little bit of, there's a little bit of change from one deck to the other two, right? There's one deck that has a few drawings that look like they're they're absent. Might have been a CAD layer that just got shut off, but then if you go to the other deck, they're prevalent in the, right, they're prevalent in the new area.
Okay, that's good.
The other thing to add there is we also have the vehicular drop off, which will be new, which will help with that connectivity as well as being able to pick up kids so they're not having to traverse necessarily through the parking lot.
Okay, and one last question for me. On the the dry basins and that you're going to do with natural plantings, I know that we've been talking a little bit about the burden of maintenance for our staff to take care of so-called natural plantings. So Sean, is that going to be a fairly low maintenance area for our staff to have to manage?
That's the plan. We're going to have a lot of grasses and such. And I guess with some of the flowering plants as well, that's probably going to be the higher maintenance. And we'll have to work out where those pockets go so that they're easier to maintain but provide a a nice aesthetic.
Yeah, I think that's that's something as we're building all these new places and we do love these new landscapes. And what we're seeing is it's really hard to get around and handpick weeds out of natural areas. And then what happens is that those natural areas start to look pretty bad. And then we don't have the aesthetic that we want, so I would encourage that to be a fairly low maintenance area.
And we're also planning on packing quite a few plants in, so just the sheer volume of plants will help on the weeding. There'll be a bit of a, you know, as everything is, has to grow in from the initial. But the idea is there's enough stems there of material that it will fill in and choke out the weeds.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. Mr. Supalack, did you have questions for staff?
Well, I guess it's it's either, yeah, I suppose it's staff. What's the increase in total swim area on this? I see the number in the new in the new development, it looks like it's pushing up on 14,000 square feet of surface area. I'd just be curious what the increase is from what it was previously.
It's approximately 4,000 square feet more surface area. MSA, correct me if I'm wrong.
That that is correct, man. It's about 4,000 square foot percentage wise, it's about 17% increase over the existing.
17%. So just while we're while we're touching on the parking calculations, I just I just ran it over on my side just to just to check it, right? What what the parking lot had been, it had been 123. It is, I think your count says now 176, so that's about, it is about a 40% increase and a 40% improvement versus, you know, a 17% improvement on the increase on the water area. And I I can, you know, as a as one of the many users in this on this Planning and Zoning Commission, I can also attest to, I've never had trouble parking. I might part, I might have parked further than I would have liked, but I've never had trouble parking. And we go quite a bit. Separate question, we touched on, but I don't know that we necessarily see it in any any of your information. We're we're refacing the old buildings that we're salvaging?
Correct, so the three smaller mechanical buildings, those will be integrated into the character of the campus with new horizontal cedar siding and minimal amounts of stone veneer. And then they will also have new standing seam metal roofs.
Okay, but but again, we don't, we don't see that, we're just, we're just hearing it, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, and then thirdly, there is a structure south southwest of the site near the lap pool. I'm guessing it's somehow a canopy or a tent structure, looks like a pitch roof. Is that right? Open underneath?
Correct, so the existing site has a number of shade structures distributed throughout that openy, open grass area. And those shade structures are proposed to remain. It will be repainted and there will be new awnings installed.
But but there's a new one. Again, it's connected.
Are you talking about the more sizable one?
Yes, is that also a shade shade structure?
My knowledge, yes. Katie, are you able to speak to that one that is just south of the water slides?
Yeah, just.
Correct, there is one structure that is a little bit larger than the others and and that is planned to move down closer to the lap pool.
Any other question? Thank you, Mr. Supalack. Any other questions? Yes, Ms. Kennedy?
This this may be out of bounds, but that's what I like to do. Just a quick question on if there's been consideration given for the construction impact to YN dot elementary?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the the whole question. What was?
Has there been consideration given to any kind of construction traffic impact to YN dot elementary during school?
We we've been in in fairly many lengthy conversations with the schools about our plans. And we just went with them through our construction staging proposal with them to ensure that what we were planning to do in the way of construction traffic would not interfere with their school traffic, or it would be as minimal as possible. There is also the desire for us to work with the construction company to make sure that their hours of operation won't be conflicting with their drop off and pickup times so that their their movement will be restricted during those times.
Now, Mr. Erman, I I imagine that there will also be some utilization of the parking lot for dumpster type equipment or, you know, parked construction equipment, that sort of thing. With discussions with the elementary school essentially utilizing that capacity that they otherwise would have during the school year, are you going to dedicate a portion of the parking lot that can be used?
We will cordon off the southernmost row of parking spaces for the staging of any type of parking for construction and dumpsters. And that will be literally the only area that the construction will be using. All the other areas will be used by the school.
Thank you, Matt. Mr. Fishman?
Yeah, I I this is a good conversation on parking. I I it's a, there's a lot of asphalt in this new plan. And I always get concerned about overparking. And in many cases, we, of course, we've already got shared parking with the school and the church across the street. It is, would it be possible to get a definite agreement with that school so that they can use ours and we can use theirs since the hours are so different and so on? And 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 keep the parking so we don't overpark, if we can eliminate some asphalt.
Nikki, is there a shared parking agreement already in place between the pool and the school?
Yes, so the, there's not a formal legal document, but there is an understood shared parking agreement between the school and the city as it is a shared site.
So, Mr. Fishman, are you looking for a more formal agreement?
I am, because churches change and administration changes and so on. And I thought that we we've required that in in other cases, and I thought that would be something to think about, but.
Well, the good news about the school is that we actually own all of the school property.
I'm talking about the church, Matt.
Okay, so the church across the street?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can research that.
Okay, great.
Mr. Schnee.
Well, actually, that was my question. Who who owns the parking lot? Does the does the school school system or does the city?
Yeah, the city of Dublin actually owns the entire campus. The property of the campus, I should say, and we lease the property to the schools. So it's physically our property to do with what we need to do. But we do work very closely with the schools on anything we do for a joint effort to solve whatever problems we need to.
Thank you.
Out of curiosity, one follow up question. As far as maintenance goes, I've seen our city crew out there taking care of the park landscape. Does the city also take care of the school landscape, or is that the the school district that takes care of that?
There's actually an imaginary line that we share the responsibilities based on the the usage. So we we are, we're comfortable with the arrangement we have.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff at this point? Mr. Supalack?
Sorry, forgive me, one more. And this is, this is a more of a personal concern. But I'm seeing a slightly different layout on the bike racks from the rendering to the drawings, just the weighting from the north side to the south side. I would suspect that the the drawings are more accurate than the rendering.
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. With no other questions for staff at this point in time, there has been public comments submitted. We're doing a little bit different procedure this time. Staff is going to present the items that have already previously been provided to commission for review for the public record. for the public record. And then if there are any new items that have been submitted, then staff will read those into the record. Otherwise, they will just be presented on the screen so that anyone who is watching the video can either review them now or when you're watching, when you can't sleep in the future, then you can review them then.
And give me just a minute here. Um one of the comments that um I thought might uh valid some um discussion is something that we had not heard yet before. Can you see my screen?
Uh we can only see the directory right now with the individual comments files, but no comment is displayed.
So um the directory is all the comments that we have received uh thus far. And I wanted to point out the comment by um Ms. Ray, that is the one that we received late today. And I'll work on trying to get this up on the screen, but I was hoping that maybe uh Michael Hendershot, our um engineering representative for the city and Sean Krevetsky could maybe comment on this particular comment. Um because it has to do with the um with the stormwater management for the site. And the comment specifically is about um what kind of code requirements there are for retention ponds, which um goes along the lines of it's not a zoning code requirement, obviously, but um the concern is that the plans identify a depth of a retention area that is six feet. And um it is safe um in a park near an elementary school. Is there an option to have it to be less than six feet? So maybe if Sean and Michael could um weigh in on that a little bit, we as planning have worked um with both of um Parks and Rec as well as engineering to maybe um show some type of area that is a dry basin, but could be some sort of success story, hopefully, for the city, that this is actually something that could be done in the future in other developments as well.
Right.
I was hoping that you guys could answer that while I'm trying to get my screen back to actually show something.
Claudia, before they answer that question, since the Ray comment was later and the commission may not have been able to uh review that one prior to the meeting, could that one be read into the record, please?
Yes. Um so this came in today at uh just shortly before four P M. And it is from Terry Ray at seven, six, nine, four, Glenmore Court, Dublin, Ohio, four, three, zero, one, seven. And it says, what is the code requirement for the retention pond that is identified in the drawings to the north of the pool complex? Is this a new code requirement? As there isn't a retention pond for the existing pool, the plans identify the depth of the retention area as six feet deep. Is that safe in a park slash near an elementary school? Is there an option to have it be less than six feet?
So this is Michael Hendershot um in the engineering division. So we have a stormwater management design manual um for these extended dry detention basins. And um it specifies the mean depth for a dry detention basin shall be between three to six feet. So the six feet um is within code requirements. And we also um are working with the applicant to make sure that the side slopes um are between, it's basically four to one, and there's some areas where it's getting to three to one, but we're trying to minimize those side slopes because we um we're trying to make sure that that's a safe environment um around the pond. So yes, per per code, it's between three and six feet. So they are meeting that code requirement. Um and the side slopes, we're making sure that they're um mainly four to one in certain areas. It's um getting up to three to one.
So the side slopes are manageable. It's fairly easy to walk in and out of. They're not steep slopes that somebody would fall into. Uh is what Michael's saying for the four to one, three to one kind of slopes.
Thank you, Sean and Michael.
Do you anticipate much water in the in these dry retention ponds?
So there for a dry detention pond, there's a forty-eight hour drawdown time requirement. So when it rains, obviously, the pond's going to fill up because it's there to to hold water um to address water quality, which is treating the stormwater as it gets into the basin, and then also water quantity, which is regulating the release of the stormwater. It is going to fill up with water. Uh but within the course of forty-eight hours, that will drain back down to basically be dry again.
Okay.
So in a non-rain situation, there should be no water sitting in the pond in the dry basin.
Thank you.
And we do on that parcel, Michael, can you speak to the water that's on the north end of the park that is already there adjacent to the school?
Right, so right. So the applicant did take a look at that. Their first approach was to utilize that existing regional retention basin for the stormwater management for this project. Um their design engineer took a look at that basin. Um that basin was developed before water quality requirements were established. Um and they they took a look and to basically bring that pond up to current standards, it would require significant modifications. Um so the applicant and the design team determined that it's it was better to move in the direction of having the proposed stormwater management facilities that are shown in the application instead of trying to basically retrofit stormwater management up to current standards in that existing retention basin.
Uh Michael, a piece of education looking for here for the general public. Uh can you speak to why the requirement for stormwater management exists, especially when we're looking at a parcel that has so much hard surface and non-permeable surface?
Right. So an example is just with that existing retention basin. So um it it's not adequately sized for current standards for those for both water quality and water quantity. So the water quantity requirement is basically regulating the release rate. So when it rains, water goes into the pond. If you didn't have any kind of water quantity release, water is just going to wash immediately downstream. The concern is having downstream flooding. So that's really the intent behind the water quantity management is to maintain your site's stormwater, make sure that you're not flooding downstream, because as new projects come in, that's new impervious areas. So if you think about it, the water is going to drain quick more quickly downstream. Um so that that's the whole premise behind the stormwater management for water quantity. And then for water quality, um similarly, if you have rainwater coming on the impervious surfaces, it can collect pollutants, debris. So the water quality uh management part of that is to basically settle out those pollutants before it goes downstream.
Thank you. And Claudia, are you able to present those or do we need to read them into the record?
I'm going to try it one more time.
Now, i- if you're presenting a window right now, the window that you're presenting is the the application is called Windows. So it's Microsoft Windows Explorer. And so if you're presenting at the application level, it will not present the actual document. You may have to stop sharing and then share your Adobe screen.
Gotcha.
While she's um looking at that, oh, there we go. Okay. I just wanted to ask about um just a question about how the city is um approaching these rain gardens in um similar to the Cardinal parking lot where we tried to get rid of a lot of the stormwater um through the pavement instead of, you know, moving it away from the site. Is that? Is that something that we're doing normally uh when we look at new parking lots and that sort of thing? I know this is an existing parking space, but kind of what's the sustainability on parking lots and rain gardens and that sort of thing?
So a rain gardens and approved stormwater management facility that can be utilized. Um the applicant has different options that they can use. For this project, um they decided to use the extended dry detention basins. They uh my understanding is there was a safety concern about proposing an additional retention or wet basin just with the proximity to the school. This project's also utilizing underground storage. There are certainly other options that could be utilized, like permeable pavers or rain gardens, but this just that happens to be the options that the applicant decided to utilize for the project is the the dry basins and the underground storage system.
Okay, thank you.
Out of curiosity, are oil-water separators required in permeable pavement?
Uh yes, there is a pre-treatment component to that. Um I think the the permeable pavers within itself, the media that's underneath, um the pavers has a water quality component. Um so if it's sized appropriately, the I guess the media underneath the permeable pavers can serve as the water quality feature. Um for something like a underground storage system, the hydrodynamic separators that kind of separate out the pollutants would be required before it goes into the system. Um if they don't utilize like an isolate a row component to the underground system, um that's basically serving as the water quality component for the underground storage system. So there's I guess there's different options they can utilize, but the permeable pavers, answer your question, can serve for water quality.
Thank you.
The other piece to add is the amount of planting that we're adding in this particular dry basin will help with some uptake of water as well as uptake of of pollutants per se.
Thank you. All right, on our screen, we have um the first public comment item. This one was submitted uh by Antonio's mother. I want to say Angela, uh but Antonio is the commenter. Thank you, Claudia.
So a lot of these comments um have been um addressed by Mr. Ehrman during his presentation um already in terms of zero entry and um as well as ADA accessible. That's a requirement that the city obviously takes very seriously, so.
So Claudia, do you have the next one if we go, you know, Michael Berlin? I'm just going somewhat alphabetically.
Yes. Not sure why this is so clunky tonight, but I apologize for that. Um so Michael Berlin submitted comments. He's on Heatherwood Lane. And um he was concerned about the unknown site conditions, which again had to do a lot with engineering issues that were uh uncovered late after um going into the depth of construction drawings for a thirty-year-old site.
Thank you. And can we go to Tracy, please?
Okay. Oh, Tracy Ray I just read. That was the
That was Terry Ray. I'm looking at Tracy Borquin.
Perfect. I have to say last name, so if you don't mind, thank you.
And I can show you some tips and tricks after the after the meeting.
I clearly need them.
Luckily, we only have these couple of items on the agenda tonight.
How do we move that over?
Let me try this one more time.
And then if you could just scroll up so that we could see the name attributed
Yeah.
for public record. Thank you. I how about Katie Brown? Thank you. Uh Jennifer Doherty? Thank you. Brian Moran? Thank you. And finally, Michelle Worelia?
And then we will also put all those comments um on the pages for the cases where we have all of the um information that got published to you all.
Thank you. Uh have any other public comment items come in on these two cases since we started the meeting?
No, we have not received anything until uh since four P M this afternoon.
Ms. Call and Ms. Husak?
Yes.
Yes. I received an email directly to me.
Okay.
Kind of I read that.
Uh please, please do.
Would you mind taking that down? Yeah, sorry. Um okay, so. Sorry, I have to get your faces out of the way. If I can figure out how to do that. Maybe not. Okay, so it's um from this evening at seven twenty-seven P M from Robin Campbell. It says, hi, Nicole. I'm watching the live feed on tonight's P and C meeting on the Dublin Community Pool North, and I don't see any forum for submitting questions. We live on the north side of Arlington Park. Can you please tell me about the lighting situation on the expanded parking lot? Currently, the parking lot is lit up like mire, and I'm confident that that is not the desire of the neighborhood to expand light pollution. How may I get my? How may I get answers to my question? Thank you. Robin Campbell, five, five, six, five, Brand Road, Dublin, Ohio, four, three, oh, one, seven.
Thank you, Nikki.
Yeah.
Nikki and Matt, could you speak to the lighting concern?
Yeah, definitely. So as part of this application, um a photometric plan um is required to be submitted. Um photometrics look at the lighting levels proposed to be dissipated from various features. This site does include site lighting as well as building lighting. Um both of these items are intended to be the minimal light levels that are necessary to ensure that the site is safe at night. Um but the Parks and Rec uh department certainly realizes the site's location within a neighborhood um and has um not proposed um really any lighting on the west side of the structure. So that would be adjacent to those single-family residences. There will be additional parking lot lighting, um which is required. Um but it there will be no light trespass with this application. The code requires that light levels be zero at ten feet past the property line, and this will meet it. Um I also anticipate that these fixtures will have um shields. So ideally, they would not um negatively impact residents.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Matt, did you have anything to add to that?
I did not. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Fox?
I'm curious, Nikki, um is is that the way it appears right now? Is the is the light level that will be similar to the light level that is at present?
Yeah, it will be consistent with what's existing.
So the complaint is that it's too bright now?
Correct.
Is there a way that these light levels, and we're expanding the parking lot? Um I know that it says that it it shouldn't bleed out over, but the point is it's very light over a parking lot. Um I don't know if these are dimmed after a certain hour. If there's a way that they can be put on a timer of some sort, is there a way that we don't have enormous amount of light twenty-four hour, you know, during a twelve-hour period? What's what are our? What's, what are our options when it comes to addressing her particular complaint? Because obviously, it's too much light now, and it will be too much light later.
Correct. I can let Mr. Ehrman or Mr. Kowetski speak to the, the operational details, but yes, it is certainly an option to turn off 50% of the fixtures at a certain time. Other auto-oriented businesses throughout Dublin have been required to do that in the past. I believe now with LED technology, there are also some dimmable feature fixtures. But I think both the Planning Division and the Parks and Rec Department would need to investigate what that selection is.
So Ms. Martin, I, I'm gonna take a straw poll, but I think I already know the answer. I, I'm looking to the rest of the commission to essentially agree or disagree with Jane, essentially Ms. Martin's recommendation for a 50% dim after a certain time. Luckily, this is our parcel, and we, you know, the parks are only open until, I, I say open in air quotes. The parks are only utilized, the pool is only open for certain hours, and obviously, the school is vacant after certain hours. So straw poll, just a thumbs up, thumbs down for yes, we want to go low light level after a certain time?
Well.
Okay, I have all but one thumbs up.
Well, I have a comment.
Yes, Mr. Fishman.
We want to make, we, pools generally have a nuisance problem after hours where kids go in and break into the pool and so on. So I want to make sure that the lighting's enough to deflect that kind of problem. And I have a suggestion that Mrs. Campbell, her house is right on Brand Road backing of the school. Maybe we can mediate some of that light with some landscaping or something. But I, I would, I would, if, if everybody feels it's safe to dim that light, that's fine, but as said, I know we have after-hour visitors that should be deflected.
Yeah, and we are not proposing going zero light level, we're just dimming it to 50%. So I, I share your concern with unwanted visitors, whether they be of the human or the animal type, so.
I wasn't thinking, I'm saying the two-legged.
Yes, yes, Mr. Sner.
My thumb was indicative more of a question. When does, I, I don't doubt that the citizen lives there, and so she's witnessing the light. But when does the pool close, you know, relative to sunset? What are the hours of the pool, and then what is typical for how long you would leave the lights on? Are the lights currently during season on 100% 24/7? So what is it currently that, and what can we do about it?
Mr. Ehrman, can you speak to that?
I can speak generally to that, I think it depends. You know, different parts of the season give us different amounts of light during operating times versus others. So the lights will come on, let's say sooner during the latter and the earlier months of the season versus the middle of the season. And then there's the other component of the school activities that extend beyond the, the evening hours as well. So, you know, the school activities will drive some of the desire and the need for lighting in that parking lot as well. I will, I will tell you, and perhaps Keith or Katie could speak to the photometrics of this a little bit from an architect's standpoint. But I do know the technologies of lighting have significantly improved just over the last few years. And we will, certainly, we have taken into consideration the new lighting that's being added to this lot. We'll also take a look at, you know, the, the actual photometric balance once this is in place, and we can make adjustments, whether that with new lighting improvements throughout or make adjustments onsite with what we have, have to work with to accommodate whatever the needs are from the residents. But Keith, I see you've come up online, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I would often just to let everybody know that the average light level across the lot is three-foot candles or less. So that's, that's not a lot of light in the, in the big scheme of things. And then we are using cutoff fixtures, which holds the light in inbound onto the parking lot itself. So there's no light spillage off to the surrounding properties, if you want to think of it that way. So, you know, the light is, you know, very well minimized. And I, you know, I think we can, you know, they'll be on photocells so that they come on when the, the outdoor light, you know, requires it. And then there, there can be timers or other devices put on them to start to shut them down as, as you guys, as you all are suggesting. So I, I think it's something we can control, and that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying.
Thank you, Mr. Hall, Ms. Kennedy.
I'm just to jump back to my fellow counsel, Schneer's question. The pool closes at 8:00. So the standard hours are the pool is closed by 8:00 PM in the summer, and the sun is still up, as you know, as you can see from my window next to me. Just for reference.
Additionally, that, that is the younger age, it's not a high school, so we're not looking at football games and, you know, those sorts of things after hours. And so I, I don't necessarily think that the, the resident is asking for, hey, I don't want any lights on at 6:00 PM. But can we come up with a reasonable expectation that the lights will be off when adults are headed to bed? And so looking to staff to make recommendations as to when that is and how that's accomplished. Of course, keeping in, in mind and in consideration Mr. Fishman's point with unwanted visitors and making sure that we are not compromising safety by any stretch.
Right.
Mr. Sner, did you have a follow-up comment?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I'm, I'm just sort of concerned that we're walking down this path where we're inserting ourselves in an area that has lots of implications, too much light, too little light. We all want to be sensitive to, to the residents, we want to be sensitive to safety, and we also want to be sensitive to school functions. And so, you know, without conferring with them, I'm just, I'm concerned about saying, yeah, let's go 50% or, or whatever without, you know, a lot more thought, and personally, I would defer to the experts when I hear how much light there is or isn't at a particular time.
Yep, and Mr. Sner, right now, the direction is to look to staff to investigate more, not give them direction that this is what we're going to do. So Mr. Supalack, going back to you.
Yeah, well, and I was just gonna say this on behalf of, right, as, as an architect who's done, done this rigmarole before, there is a wealth of, again, there's photometrics in the, in the thing, there, in the, in the set, the drawing set, there's a wealth of codes around this. Everything Tim started touching, touching on. I, I have full confidence that the new lights that they put in will be fully compliant and, and sensible. I, I think the, the big question here is, what do we have out there in the old lights? And, and/or can the city, right, right now, the, the old lights are not necessarily in the scope, but there is a, you know, maybe the conversation here is, can the city take a look at, can they be augmented with, you know, in any way, shape, or form to help out this concern generally? But I have no, I have no qualms that the city will put in the appropriate level, levels of light for everything.
Thank you, Mr. Supalack. So continuing on with commission discussion. Mr. Fishman, do you want to start us off? Overall feel on the applications and what we're being asked to consider tonight? If you have any questions, concerns, comments?
I, I think that we've covered them, I think the lighting is important, I think the experts will, will take care of the lighting. I was concerned about parking, but I think if we had a joint agreement with the church across the street, I, I, I think we're in good shape.
Mr. Fishman, can I ask a clarifying question there? So right now, it is, it is required that 200 parking spaces be associated with the pool. Staff is recommending 176 or a decrease of 24 spots. It was my understanding that you didn't want to overpark it, you didn't want to have too much parking.
That's right, that's what I'm saying.
Do we need a shared agreement with the church? We're reducing the parking, do we need a shared agreement with church? Or is the reduction in parking meeting your concern?
The reduction is fine, but Mr. Ehrman said that sometimes with, the high school has a big thing and so on, there is a
Understood.
Parking, and so therefore, if we had a, a firm agreement with the church across the street, then if that happens, we, we won't be parking in neighborhoods. So, so I'm for less parking. There's a lot of asphalt out there, I looked at the plan, so I'm, I'm in agreement with, with staff. I just, I, I, I feel so much better when we have things in writing with these verbal agreements. 10 years from now, the, the church is a different administration, and they say, hey, you know, we don't want to do that. So I, I think that's, that's all I'm concerned about.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman. Ms. Kennedy.
I can give my final comments now, Ms. Call, if that's okay. As far as the sign, which we were asked to provide feedback on, I think the, the, the building-mounted sign is well-done and is beautiful for the facility. It seems to fit with the facility, especially considering the many shared uses surrounding it. The traditional Dublin Parks and Rec sign doesn't seem to be the right fit for this, given that. So I am, I am in agreement with that sign proposal. The parking, I'm also on board with the 176 spots, as I'm a frequenter of this pool, as I know my neighbor Mark is as well. And I've never had an issue parking there with the current situation, and then with the addition of new spots, it seems like it, it is the right, it is within scope, and it would accommodate the, the citizens. So with that, overall, I'm so excited for the pool to open, please proceed, I hope it passes tonight so that we can get moving on that.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Mr. Grimes, do you have a?
I think it's an incredible project, I'm really enthused about all the cooperation and communication that's gone on for, it looks like, three years. So I am certainly on board with this project, I think it's gonna be a great reuse and realignment of not only the, the site, but in, in that center of that community. It's a, it's a really important point with, with the schools and the golf and the churches and everything we got going on there. I think this is a great plan, and thank you all for your efforts.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes, Mr. Supalack.
That last point might be the most important, last point Leo made. Thank you all for bearing with all this. Your due diligence with the public has been impressive. This is, you know, vitally important to a lot of people. Kudos, it's a nice project, I have nothing bad to say.
Thank you, Mr. Supalack, Mr. Sner.
I had a concern about the, the parking, but defer to, one, the experts, and two, the patrons, the neighbors who actually use the facility, and their experience is, is most valuable. And it, it just looks great, and, and I echo the, everyone else's sentiments that a great exhibition of community involvement, so I'm all for it.
Thank you, Mr. Sner, Ms. Fox.
I have seen it a couple of times now, and, and I also have to congratulate both the planning staff, Matt, all the people at Parks and Rec, and the designers, because this was probably also one of the most impressive community engagement efforts. And I know that it, it took a lot of turns, but in all, in all aspects of it, we always come out with a much better project and one that has subscribe buy-in by the community, and this is gonna be around for a long time and create a lot of joy. And I'm, I'm very happy with it. I also, I think the sign is sharp, contemporary, up-to-date, makes us feel like we're not just a typical old pool. It's exciting entranceway. I appreciate any consideration you can give to neighbors' concerns about the lighting, but I also think that the experts can take care of that. So yes, I'm absolutely for this, even with the $2.5 million budget over, I would say, just the extras that it required, but I think we'll, in the end, it'll be a great, it'll be a great community asset.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. I will tie up just the, the lauding from the commission. I think staff has done a remarkable job on this project to have the pool that used to be there in operation and as well utilized as it was for a period of 33 years is somewhat remarkable. So we appreciate not looking at this from a, how can we keep the $6 million budget? And cutting corners so that it has a 20-year useful life rather than the 33-year useful life. Thank you for being good stewards of not just our, our residents' tax money, but also what amenities we provide and the level of comfort that the community has access to. Looking at something from a safety, safety concern, you know, Jane touched on earlier, connectivity. That is always something top on our, on our list of things to check the box on. Looking at something from making sure that it has a lifespan that will outlive, you know, some of us and, you know, be an amenity to future generations. So overall, I think that we've expressed the concerns with the, the parking lot heat, and that's been mitigated by landscaping. We've talked about lighting, and we're going to look for some recommendations there. We talked about connectivity. Any other items that, that you feel that council needs to be aware of? Of course, we, we trust that you will bring it up to them, but I think that you've done an excellent job presenting what is on our horizon this evening, so thank you. At this point in time, I will entertain motion number one to approve the minor text modification.
Remove.
Mr. Grimes, thank you.
Second.
Mr. Fishman, a second. Ms. Beal?
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Mr. Supalack?
Yes.
Mr. Sner?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Motion number two, I'm looking for a motion to approve the amended final development plan.
So moved.
With two conditions. So Mr. Supalack, I have a first, Mr. Grimes, I have a second, Ms. Beal?
Mr. Supalack?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Sner?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Beal, and finally, motion number three, I'm looking for a motion to approve the amended final development plan, case 20-082A FDF with a single condition.
So moved.
Mr. Supalack? Mr. Grimes, I have a second, Ms. Beal?
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Sner?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Mr. Supalack?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Tonight, do we have any communications from staff?
I just wanted to point out two quick things. In terms of the special meeting that we had for ARB and the Planning and Zoning Commission last week, we are preparing to have some follow-up comments for you for July the 9th. And then we would anticipate that coming to you in a more formal manner in August. So that's kind of what our schedule looks like at the moment. And then I have been told today as well that with the anticipation of the tournament taking place sometime in July, that you may be receiving invitations, emails, tickets. I'm not exactly 100% sure how this all works, but keep a lookout for those because there is definitely something that the city will, will do on your behalf to have you be an attendee if you choose to do so. But that's all we have.
Thank you, Ms. Fishman, Ms. Kennedy.
Hey, just a quick question, I saw that city council did an in-person meeting, was it this week?
Yes, we did on Monday.
Is there a plan to move back to in-person, Claudia?
We talked a little bit about this at the beginning of this, of our 6:00 PM tonight, and we have requested that, from the administration standpoint, they would give us till the end of June to evaluate how this works with council. And the planning commission doesn't really have any more meetings anyway, so it's kind of neither here nor there. But we tend to have a lot more applicants and a lot more public attending Planning and Zoning Commission meetings than council. So from a logistics standpoint, we felt as though it might be better to have council go through a couple rounds and see how this really goes. They, they had no, they had one applicant there on Monday. We are anticipating that there might be public attending on the 22nd. So depending on how that works, I think it would give us a little bit more comfort and a little bit more. So depending on how that works, I think it would give us a little bit more comfort and a little bit more logistical information as to how this might work. What they did, and Jane, I mean, help me out here if you have something to add to that, but everybody had a six-foot table that was spaced around a a square and portable mics. And then staff was sort of in the hallway waiting to go in for their turns. But again, there was not that much public there, or there was not, there was not as many applicants there as we have here tonight even, for an example.
It can be a little bit awkward if you have quite a few people, because most of the audience would be sitting outside the chamber room, and they would come in. So it is kind of nice to be able to have a quick access here. You ask a question and the and the window pops up and you get an answer. It would take probably longer right now with the setup that there is. But I do think that there is a missing element here with community input, which I think is really important. But as for the the staff and asking applicant questions, it does seem to go a little smoother here than it than it would in council chambers at the present time.
Thank you, Ms. Fox.
So at this point, we are zooming until at least our next meeting, which is not scheduled until July the 9th. So we'll, we'll keep you apprised as to what the goal is for that meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Fishman.
Sure.
Mr. Sner?
My recollection, I didn't pop it up, but I think, you know, on the website, the agenda has the July 9th meeting scheduled as in-person. So if we were to continue, if that is the case.
I think it does at the moment, yeah. Yeah, so that agenda doesn't go out until the last week of June, so we have a little bit more time to evaluate.
I just wanted to say thank you to our packet elves this past week for dropping off the material. It is always pleasant, especially when looking at drawings, to be able to have tangible copies rather than looking at a, you know, nine, 10-inch screen. So thank you very much to staff for going out of your way to make our thoughts a little easier.
Indeed, I second that.
And can I tell you how excited I am that the pool is moving along? But this is one more hurdle. So thank you, everyone. I know that this has not been an overnight decision, nor has it been. You know, I think that someone mentioned earlier, this was the 11th iteration. So thank you very much. Ms. Fox touched on working with the community engagement portion. I think overall, we are very, very pleased with the outcome of all of the effort, and we, it it does not go unrecognized that there was this level of effort behind it. So thank you to everyone. Any other communications for this evening?
No, just thank you, Warren, for my note. Oliver picked it up.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone.
Since Claudia brought that up, I also wanted to to express my appreciation. As I went through this, I was really excited about the pool, and the staff has done an amazing job, and 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 our staff makes it a lot of fun, along with you people being on this committee. I've been on a long time. This has been, it's a great experience.
Thank you all.
Well, thank you, everyone. We will see you in July if we don't see you before then, and have a wonderful rest of your evening.
Yes, enjoy your break.
Thanks, everyone.
And then give me a second here to end the stream, okay?
Okay, thank you, Claudia.